Спасибо большое. Спасибо, Александр Николаевич, за вашу представление, за вашу жизнь и успех в этом и за вашу поддержку для свободного речного разговора и реформы. Я очень благодарен, что я здесь сегодня на этой станции, которая стала для всего мира ярким локотем информации и правды. Три месяца назад были атакованы противниками реформы. Остонкино является символом силы свободного выражения и бдительных сacrificий российского народа, чтобы построить большой и свободный будущее. Я так рад, что здесь много молодых людей, и надеюсь, что еще многое из нас смотрит на нас на телевидении, потому что это будет будущее молодежи России, о котором я хотел бы говорить. Однажды каждая г代 или два, все великие нации должны остановиться и думать о том, где они находятся в времени. Они должны перезагорать сами. Они должны представить свое будущее новой способностью. Ваша г代 пришла настолько в один из этих моментов. Вчера я проехал Москву. Я остановился в бакерии и приобрел немного брата. Я пойду в другой магазин и поговорю с людьми там. Я поговорил с огромным количеством людей на улице. Я идти в Казанскую катедрию и вспарить свечу в память моей матери. Это катедрия, которая, как и Россия сама, была построена на старых основах. За веки российское население показало свое величие в многих способах: в искусствах, в литературе, на бойковом поле, в университете и в космосе. П�ему коммунистический системе подвергнуты права человека и инициатива человека, и подвергнуты соседям, и привели к мировому холодной войне, все еще величие российского населения показалось. Теперь, на пределе 21-го века, ваша нация снова призывает определить свое величие в понятиях, которые подходят к настоящему дню и будущему, в способах, которые позволят вашей нации быть сильной, свободной, процветающей и в покое. Мы живем в интересном времени. Модерные революции изменяют жизнь для лучшего в мире: революции в информации, в коммуникациях, в технологии и производстве. Все эти вещи делают демократию более возможной. Они делают из изолированных, государственного контроля экономики еще более неэффективной. Они создают возможности для тех, кто может их воспользоваться, более множественными и богатыми, чем когда-либо до этого. И тем не менее, даже в этом современном мире старые демони человечества все еще нас враждуют: ненависть к друг другу, основанной только на своей религии или на своей расе, или на ее этническом фонде, или иногда просто на земле, на которой они родились. В середине этих конфликтов между лицами и силами завтрашнего дня и силами вчера, я верю, что величие наций в 21-м веке не будет определено не тем,能不能 они диктируют миллионам и миллионам людей внутри и за их границы, а вместо этого тем,能不能 они предоставят своим гражданам без усмотрения на их расу или гендера возможность достигнуть максимального их способности, использовать полную advantage на невероятных вещах, которые есть в мире сегодня и завтра. Поэтому, если мы хотим понять величие России в 21-м веке, я верю, что ваша нация должна быть сильной демократически и экономически. И в этом increasingly interconnected world, вы должны быть способны вместе и работать с соседями, близкими и по всему миру. Для этого, я думаю, мы должны написать совершенно новый будущее для всей Европы. Будущее, в котором безопасность не основана на старых делах, а на новой интеграции наций через их подобное взаимное commitment к демократии, открытой экономике и мирной военной cooperation. Я пришел сюда как друг и поддержка демократических изменений, происходящих в этой нации. Надеюсь, что моя нация и я можем сделать положительный вклад в духе честного и равного партнерства, не просто для этих больших изменений, но и положительного вклада в everyday lives обычных граждан этой великой нации. В конце концов, вы должны решить свое собственное будущее. Я не предполагаю, что это я сделаю. Ваше будущее все еще ваше создать, ваше написать, ваше сформировать. Но я пришел сказать, что моя нация и ее президент очень хотят быть вашими равными партнерами и честными друзьями. Если бы я был в вашем месте, слушая ваше разговор, я мог бы спросить себя: почему этот парень говорит это? Что он в голове? Почему он действительно стремится работать с нами? Во-первых, я идентифицирую и даже симпатизирую с трудностями, которые вы面临аете. Я竞选 president of the United States в 1992, потому что я был convenc, что моя нация должна сделать некоторые очень тяжелые выборы и какие-то тяжелые изменения, чтобы сохранить мечту, которая вдохновила Американцев 200 лет. Чтобы сохранить надежды наших работников, в жестокой, тяжелой и постоянно изменяющейся новой глобальной экономике. Так что я понимаю это. Я посвятил себя в доме делать эти изменения. И я знаю, что изменения трудны, даже в среде, в которой они легче, чем в тех, которые вы面临аете. Так что я пришел сюда с честным симпатией и пониманием. я заинтересован в поддержке этих изменений, потому что моя нация стояла так долго против коммунистического системы, против ее недостатка свободы, против ее excessive dictates, против ее империальных импульсов. И я не мог себе позволить думать, что большинство вашего народа будет жалеться, если бы он отдал. Я пришел сюда, потому что я верю, что вместе мы можем написать новый будущее для Европы и помочь всему миру иметь более мирный и процветающий будущее. И, честно говоря, я пришел сюда, потому что я верю, что ваш успех очевидно в лучших интересах США и обычных американских граждан. Потому что в нашем интересе быть способным потратить меньше на защиту и инвестировать больше в наши собственные люди, в образование, здоровье и благополучие, и технологию, которая поможет нас в лучшем времени в 21-м веке. В нашем интересе убрать распространение оружия массовой destruction и сотрудничать с вами в снижении руганий к покое по всему миру. В нашем интересе развивать новые связи и новых клиентов. И каждый из этих развитий более возможен, если у нас честная, равная партнерство с сильной и свободной Россией. Я верю, что ваше определение будущего будет определено в большом количестве тем, как вы решите ответить как граждане на три большие вызовы, которые вам стоят. Первое: продолжите ли вы работать для честной рыночной экономики, или продолжите ли вы ослабить или отступить? Второе: продолжите ли вы усиливать и углублять ваше commitment к демократии, или позволите ей быть ограничена? И третье: как вы определите свой роль в мире как большей силы? Вы определяете ее в прошлых временах или завтрашних? Дайте мне начать с вызова, который очевидно влияет на повседневные жизни людей этой нации: экономический. Я знаю, что ваша переноска в рыночную экономику была тяжелой, болезненной, даже эмоционально неorienting для миллионов людей. Но если изменение кажется дорого, рассмотрите стоимость стоять и пытаться вернуться назад. Сильная государственная экономика просто не работает в современном мире. Чтобы быть уверенным, система, которой вы находились, создала очень личную общность, сделала некоторых из вас лучшим образованным людьми в мире, развела высокую технологическую базу и развела сильную индустриальную базу, связана довольно близко с вашей военной мощью. Но это неадекватно для dramatically changing, highly competitive, increasingly flexible глобальной экономики, в которой все решения просто не могут быть сделаны несколькими людьми с верху вниз, и в которой ни одна страна не immune от силы без. Старая система 실�pied до этого, поэтому вы находились в настоящем периоде переноса. Если вы попытались ее опять внести, она бы еще 실�пиеда. Дайте мне сделать это ясно, что я не предлагаю, что рынки решают все проблемы. Они очевидно не решают всех проблем общества, и, действительно, они создают некоторые проблемы для каждой общественности. Проблемы, которые должны быть честно и четко решены людьми, которые предложили иметь сильную сообщество общей интересы и общей опасность в своей нации. Тем не менее, очевидно, что увереннейший способ процветания в мире, в котором мы живем, - это способность людей производить и продавать высококачественные товары и услуги как внутри, так и за их границы. Нет другого ясного пути к процветанию. Россия очевидно имеет способность хорошо работать в этом роде экономики. У вас огромная технологическая проза, очень образованный гражданство, которое известно и воспринимается по всему миру. У вас невероятно ценные естественные ресурсы. Очевидно, что у вас есть способность хорошо работать. У вас быстрый растущий частный сектор. Уже ваша нация privatized почти треть ее индустрии. Около 600 бизнесов в месяц privatizing. Десятки миллионов ваших людей сейчас владеют частной собственностью и gaining daily experience in market economies. Но остались серьезные проблемы. Самое глубокое, конечно, - это высокие проценты инфляции. Инфляция и высокие цены destroys wages. Это делает людей чувствовать, что они не могут держаться в курсе, и что, несмотря на то, как тяжело они работают, они не будут rewarded за свое рабство. Это портит обычных работников, те же люди, которые являются основой любой общественности, которые должны верить, что будущее может быть лучше, чем настоящее. Это уменьшает эту веру и делает ее так трудной, чтобы развивать и сохранять большинство для изменений и короткосроковых сacrificий, которые должны быть сделаны. Так что инфляция должна быть замедлена. И, как все знают, это также имеет свой путь. Потому что инфляция может быть замедлена, если правительство готово печатать меньше денег и, поэтому, потратить меньше. Следующий проблемой, которую вы面临аете, похоже, для меня, как наблюдатель, это, что даже если у вас много частной privatization компаний, системы, на которых вся частная экономика зависит, не так хорошо развита, как должно быть. Не хватает законов, которые clarify и protect contracts, которые делают систему taxes clear, которые предоставляют, другими словами, framework, в котором все разные виды transactions могут происходить. Но это можно довольно легко исправить. Есть другие проблемы. Я мог бы просто mention one other, о котором Президент Елсон много говорил недавно и который получил много внимания по всему миру с момента последней выборов здесь в России. И это то, что ваше государство должно развивать какую-то социальную безопасную сетку, как и все другие успешные рыночные экономики имеют, чтобы справиться с фактом, что некоторые люди всегда будут иметь трудности в быстротехнической экономике. Большинство людей могут быть восстановлены к participation в экономике в периоды процветания, но в любой рыночной экономике всегда будут люди, которые разместены. Так что вам нужно иметь тренировочные системы, перетренировочные системы, системы, чтобы быть уверены, что новые бизнесы всегда могут начаться, когда старые бизнесы останавливается. И системы, чтобы справиться с людьми, которые просто не competitive в трудных временах. Теперь, вы должны определить, как это сделать. Никто не может определить, как это сделать для вас, или даже, есть ли это. Но как ваш партнер, я могу сказать, что США сделают все, что могут, чтобы помочь вам снизить ваши трудности, когда вы двигаетесь вперед на этом пути, и сделаем все, что мы можем, чтобы помочь вам сделать решения, которые вы готовы сделать. Дайте мне сказать, что я думаю, что это было в некотором смысле самым тяжелым периодом для вас, потому что вы принимали много рисков, вы уже сделали много изменений, и тем не менее, изменения не были ощущены тяжелыми в жизни большинства обычных граждан в стране. И это очень сложно. Но я могу сказать, что как наблюдатель, похоже, что вы начнете видеть эти изменения. Дайте мне просто дать вам несколько примеров. Я попросил вице-президент Гор и главный министр Террно Мирертон работать над программой экономической cooperation в областях энергии, среды и космоса. У вас большие энергетические ресурсы. Если мы сможем сделать еще несколько вещей, это приведет к большим потокам денег и инвестиций, процветанию и employment в эту нацию. Мы достигли соглашения, unprecedented соглашения по cooperation в космосе. В следующем месяце российские космонавты служат на нашем космическом шутеле. Мы分享我们的资源,分享我们的知识,分享我们的 training, и мы uncover things in space and in our venture, which will have direct economic benefits to the people of Russia and the people of the United States. Мы оба имеем разные, но очень важные экологические проблемы, которые требуют высоких уровней знаний и технологий, но которые создают огромные экономические возможности и большое количество рабочих мест. Эти вещи будут приходить. Вторым: в прошлом апреля, когда я встретился с Президентом Елсоном, я предложил 1,6 миллиарда долларов помощи США. Мы сейчас все это помогли, и 70% денег было потрачено. И я предоставил map вчера, что показало, что это было потрачено по всему миру в разных способах, в основном, чтобы помочь вам развить частную экономику. Вы начнете видеть преимущества этого. Только эта неделя Г-7 крупные индустриальные нации открыли офис в этой городе, руководивший американцем, для того, чтобы быть уверены, что мы скорбьем увеличиваем помощь, которая была предложена в прошлом лету, но которая слишком медленно пришла. В сентябре Конгресс США подобрал еще один 2,5 миллиард долларовый пакет помощи, который теперь может начать потечь снова, чтобы пытаться создать работы и возможности, и чтобы помочь снизить скорость инфляции в этой стране. Так что я верю, что специфические преимущества начнут ощущаться, и люди будут видеть, что есть свет на конце этого длинного туннеля. Только сегодня мы объявили подписку на контракт для покупки очень богатого ураня, контракт, который приведет еще 12 миллиардов долларов в эту нацию в течение нескольких лет. И мы работаем тяжело чтобы получить помощь для наций, которые покупают вашу энергию, потому что многие из них не могут afford to pay for it, чтобы быть уверены, что вы можете быть платить в день promptly, когда вы продаете свои энергетические ресурсы. Все эти вещи начнут иметь влияние на жизни обычных граждан. И это что-то, что для тех, кто также должен竞选 на выборы на периодичной основе, я чувствительен к этому. В демократии, если вы ставите людей на пешеходство, они будут ездить. Так что лучше дать им хорошее место ездить. И мы работаем с этим. Следующий большой вызов, который面临ает Россия, - это консолидация демократии. И я хочу сказать только несколько слов о этом. Так же как и рынок, демократия - это не лечение всех экономических проблем или социальных стрессов. Это всегда непростая и скромная система. Наша общая армия в World War II, британский главный министр Уинстон Чертшилл, однажды сказал, что демократия - это самая худшая возможная форма правительства, кроме всех остальных. Почему он это сказал? Потому что диалог так широкий, мнения такие разные, и иногда разницы так鋭, что вы думаете, что что-то будет сделано. Но демократия все еще предлагает лучшее保证 хорошего принятия решений и защиты individual и minority rights. В обществе, как ваше или мое, и throughout the multi-ethnic expanse of Europe, демократия предлагает лучшее надежде в保护 diversity и в создании diversity как источника силы, harnessing it to a world in which diversity is perhaps the overwhelming fact of life. Это почему я бы сказал вам, что каждый из нас, чтобы protect your democracy and mine, имеет личную ответственность для отклонения от intolerance, ethnic hatred, anti-Semitism и anything, что уменьшает способность каждого, кто живет в наших национальных границах, быть таким продуктивным, как возможно. Потому что, запомните, в мире, в котором мы живем, если вы делаете что-то, что отстраняет любого, кто живет в вашем стране, от права достигнуть максимального их способности, вы уменьшили ваше собственное способность быть свободной, процветающей и успешной. Я мог бы сказать, что это также почему США предупреждают другие нации уважать права этнических российцев и других minority в их границах. В обоих наших нациях успех демократии partially depends on a formal constitution and partly on regular elections and respecting those elections. Но это также зависит от полного набора других свободных association, которые дают реальное жизнь и текстуру демократии: независимых торговых союзов, newspapers и широкой видообразности civic and cultural associations. Если, как и я, вы в положении авторитета, вы знаете, что свобода речи иногда может быть болезненной. Даже в Римском времени великий император Маркус Ариллиас сказал, что свобода речи для кого-то в权力 - это что-то, что надо выдержать, а не съесть. Но это essential to democratic life, что люди чувствуют свободу говорить, что они верят, без страха отражения. Мы подвергаемся этому типу демократического фермента, и мы готовы предоставить любую техническую помощь, как мы можем, чтобы помочь этому хорошо здесь. Я это говорю, потому что некоторые люди concerned with the wide variety of views and the loud expression of those views we see in the duma here after the last election. Это может быть здоровым, если, but only if, everybody else's views are respected and protected too. For once democracy becomes an instrument of crushing the views of the minorities, of those who disagree, of those who don't have the muscle, then democracy itself soon disappears. Третий большой вызов, который вы面临аете сегодня, - это определение роли вашей великой нации в этом age. Что это означает быть большей силой в 21-м веке? Как вы把它 определите? Как вы знаете, что Россия - это большая нация? Если кто-то спросит вас описывать ее, смотря на будущее, как вы узнаете? Если кто-то спросит вас описать ее, смотря на начало 1800-х, вы бы сказали, что мы - большая нация, потому что мы победили Наполеон и вылетели из России. Верно? Whether you agree or disagree with the communist system, you can say you were a great nation in the sense that you loomed large at the height of the Soviet Empire with the Warsaw Pact. Great does not always mean good, but at least is large. Как вы определите свое величие? Это глубоко важная вопрос, который вы должны ответить. Я думаю, что есть некоторые другие способы описывать это. Россия co-sponsored with the United States the Middle East peace process. Я думаю, что это было очень хорошим. Когда Израиль и ПЛС подписали свое соглашение в сентябре 13, 1993. Я думаю, что это хорошее, что мы продолжаем работать, пока не достигнет comprehensive settlement в этой трудной области. Я думаю, что это было хорошим, что мы сделали сегодня с президентами Украины, России и США, agreeing to get all the nuclear weapons out of Ukraine and to give fair compensation to that nation for the uranium they are giving up. It makes the world a safer place. It makes your nation and mine less vulnerable to nuclear terrorism or threats. It shows that we can move beyond the nuclear age entirely. There are still questions, you know, in the world about how you will define your greatness. When I was at the NATO conference and afterward, there are nations that live between Western Europe and the border of Russia, who still wonder what the future holds. Nations who said, "Put me in NATO now, just in case." "Oh, I believe this president of Russia, when he says he respects the territorial borders of other nations, but look at the history of Russia. Think of the national impulse. Draw another line across Europe now, while you have a chance." There are people who are in the Baltic nations now, who hear some of the debate in your politics, who hear the threats to take them over again. One of your political leaders even suggested you might like to have Alaska back. I don't think I can go along with that. I say that because all those definitions, I would argue to you, are looking to yesterday. What in the world would you do with an army of occupation to the east? How would you pay for it? And what would it give you? How would you be more powerful than some small nation, one of the industrial tigers of Asia, for example, producing and selling goods and services at such a rate that their people's incomes are going up by 10% a year? And they are giving the people who live there the opportunity to do things that would have been dreamed of by their parents or grandparents. This is a very serious thing. I believe that the greatness of a nation that lasts for centuries and centuries and centuries, as this nation has, is the ability to redefine itself in every age and time. The young people of Russia especially now have a chance to show that a great power can promote patriotism without expansionism, that a great power can promote national pride without national prejudice. That, I submit, is your challenge. Today, you face no threat from invasion. That was a legitimate concern of Russia for decades and decades. A legitimate reason to want a buffer zone around your borders in former times. It is not there now. I believe the measure of your greatness in the future will be whether Russia, the big neighbor, can be the good neighbor. That is why it is so important that, as your forces operate beyond your borders, they do so according to international law. Why it is important that you continue your planned withdrawal from all the Baltic states? Why is it important that your nation work with the United States and the rest of Europe to build the Partnership for Peace called for at the NATO conference this year, so that for the first time in the history of nation-states, we can have a Europe that is united by a shared commitment to democracy, free market economies and mutual respect for borders instead of a Europe that is divided? For the first time in history. I'm very proud and pleased that President Yeltsin decided to participate in the Partnership for Peace and work for an integrated Europe, that he signed the historic accord with President Kravchuk and with me today to eliminate over 1800 nuclear warheads. Kraschuk and with me today to eliminate over 1,800 nuclear warheads. These are hopeful signs, and I believe signs... Economic decisions, the political decisions, that foster hope. You will have to decide these things. I'm amused when I come here in the spirit of genuine partnership and respect, and some people say, "well, the United States is trying to dictate our course." Nothing could be further from the truth. Believe me, my friends, it's all we can do to deal with our own problems. We don't have time to try to dictate your course. But the course you take will affect us, and so we want you to make decisions that are best for you. And I will close as I began. Will you define your future greatness in terms that were relevant to the past or terms that will shape the future? This is a crossroad and a difficult one. But the younger generations of Russians will look back on this time with either gratitude or regret, depending on how those questions are answered: the economic, the political, the military questions. I believe you will choose the future. After all, Russia did not get to this point by making all that many wrong decisions in the past, and every nation makes a few mistakes. There are a few people anywhere that have more knowledge of history, both positive and negative, that have more reason to hope for the future than you do. I know the present is difficult, but if you make the right decisions, if you choose hope over fear, then the future will reward your courage and your vision. Thank you very much.
So now we're going to do a few questions.
Nations that occupy this country has a lot of space to open. Russia is various and very different and huge. Here's the Red Square, the holy place of Russia, the symbol of power and of its nation and its people. These are centuries are represented by this. St. Petersburg was the cradle of great events, the city of white knights and Russia. The Yarmulke there was something that's being reproduced today. Stavropol, an area of contacts, of the future of agriculture. This is a melting pot where many nations live, many people live. And so now we will move from the studio to the Red Square. We just heard the speech by President Clinton to the people of Russia, and now the second part is about to take place, the informal part, when you, my dear Russian friends, will be able to speak with President Clinton directly and ask questions of him, both those who are in Ostankina Station as well as in Stavropol, Nizhny Novgorod, St. Petersburg, and in Vasilievsky Spusk in Moscow, near Red Square. And so we are continuing, and we're going live to the...
Yes, there's a microphone also. Speak English, and they can hear you, and they can listen to the translation, and I'll listen to you.
Okay, my name is Mary Gose, but I'm from the State University. And so, Mr. Clinton, what do you think about the future education in Russia? What it needs to be, how it needs to be done, and what changes are needed?
Well, I'm not an expert in your education system, although I have spent a little time trying to find out about it. Because in my career in the U.S., my major area of interest was education. I think first you have a very strong, basic system. Virtually all your people are literate, an enormous number of your people speak more than one language, and you have very strong technical programs. I would say you need to improve, you need to develop some of your educational programs for the professions that manage market economies. Do you have enough people who can run things in a very rapidly changing world? I think there are some gaps here, in other words, in the kinds of training you have for the kind of economy you're trying to develop, and I think some studies should be done about that, and you should provide those education programs. But you're actually quite fortunate in having a very literate society and a very strong background in the arts, the humanities, and in science and technology. Keep in mind one other thing: in most modern market economies, the average person, even if he or she stays with the same employer, will change the nature of their work seven or eight times in a lifetime. So it's impossible to give someone even a university degree that answers all the questions they will face in the workplace forever. So you have to develop systems of learning for a lifetime, and the most important thing is that you just get a good, basic foundation that enables you to think well, to solve problems, and to change, to learn as new things come along. Over here? Yes?
My name is Barbara. I am the first-year student at the Department of Foreign Languages at Lomonosov University. First, I'd like to...
Let's say you're a successful student. No accent.
I'd like to thank you for what you think about our future in economics and in democracy. But I'd like to remind you that what, how I see tomorrow of our country is the spiritual power. Some Muslims just say that Russia will soon become their center of everything because it will have the strongest spiritual energy here. What do you think of that? You didn't mention anything about our cultural future. Thank you.
I do think, well, I mentioned a little bit about it, but I think you have enormous cultural power. I think you also have enormous spiritual power. There's a great energy in this country that communicates itself. It's always been here, I think, and in some ways it was repressed in the last several decades. And it's coming out now in all kinds of ways, not only in terms of creative culture, but also in terms of new interests in religion and faith and all kinds of things that are, that show the character and depth of a nation. And I would urge you to cultivate that, both in terms of culture and the faith. Let's take one question from Stavropol. Is that where it's going to be? Over here. Someone ask a question. I can't pick anyone there. You'll have to be self-selected.
Good day, Mr. President. Good day. Mikhail Kovalev, Stavropol. This is the cradle of Perestroika. This is the birthplace of the first and last president of the Soviet Union. This is a multinational area. We have all kinds of people here: students, workers, office workers, representatives from the Cossacks, also refugees from the hot points in the former Soviet Union. Mr. President, on the territory of the former Soviet Union, civil wars go on without end. Russia unfortunately either cannot or doesn't want to settle the civil strife. What is your feeling? Does the United States of America plan to get involved in these conflicts, and if so, in what way? More so because there is an example of Yugoslavia. There is a danger here of taking sides. In the West, the West is supporting the Muslims in Yugoslavia. Let me repeat the question: if there will be an involvement in the United States, what kind of involvement would this be?
Well, first, I don't think it's entirely accurate that Russia has not been involved at all. There's no question that Russia and the Russian military was very instrumental in stabilizing Mr. Shevardnadze's position in Georgia. So I think there will be times when you will be involved, and you will be more likely to be involved in some of these areas near you, just like as the United States has been involved in the last several years in Panama and Grenada and other places near our area. The thing I think that we have to try to do is to make sure, as I said in my speech, that when there is an involvement beyond the borders of the nation, that it is consistent with international law, and whenever possible, actually supported by other nations, either through the United Nations or through some other instrument of international law. Now, let me, let us also frankly acknowledge that some of these conflicts, and take the one in Yugoslavia, in Bosnia, for example, some of these conflicts represent longstanding conflicts that were actually repressed during the time when these countries were effectively controlled from above and when the various warring factions were in effect occupied. I mean, what happened in Yugoslavia was when Mr. Tito died and then the central government's authority began to erode, and then all the various parts of Yugoslavia began to try to be independent. Bosnia and Herzegovina, which always had these three different factions, basically degenerated back to the conflict which had been there for hundreds of years. And you can, there is no perfect solution to any of life's problems, you know, and I still think on balance we're better off without empires, and countries are better off seeking their own determination. But in this case, the truth is, people there keep killing each other. Now, what I have done is, is the reason that you say we have supported the Muslims in Yugoslavia, we supported the multi-ethnic government in Bosnia because it was recognized by the United Nations. So the United States supported it because it was recognized by the United Nations. However, we also support a peace process which would give some territory to the Muslim-dominated government, to the Serbs, and to the Croats. So what we're doing in Bosnia is to try to support the UN mission and trying to urge the parties to stop killing each other. If you don't have an imperial army, if you don't just go in and take people over and tell them what to do, then you have to make some allowances for the fact that on occasion they'll do the stupid thing and keep on killing each other even when it doesn't make any sense. And there are some areas where you can stop it and some where you can't. If you look at Africa, for example, and Burundi, and Angola, and the Sudan, never mind Somalia, just those three countries, hundreds of thousands of people have died in each of those countries just in the last couple of years because of civil wars. That's what I said in my speech: there's still too much ethnic and tribal hatred in this world, and we can't control it all, not and take care of our problems within our borders. Over here? Yes, sir, over there in the back. Go ahead.
Maria Michenova, journalist. Mr. Clinton, what would you like the historians to say about you once you finish your tenure as president?
I would like them to say that I restored a sense of hope and optimism to my country, that I strengthened the economy and made the people, made it possible for my people to lead the world economically into the 21st century, and that I restored the sense of community in America, that we came back together as a people, even though we are very diverse now. And I would like it to be said that I helped to lead the world to more peaceful cooperation and to a future very different from the bloody and divided past of the 20th century. Yes, the gentleman over there that I called him. Get the microphone, sir. Here it is, behind you there.
It's a good enough journalist also, a journalist. Mr. President, if at a dinner table, let's say President Yeltsin would ask you to switch places with him, would you make such a risk? Would you risk doing that?
No, I like the job I have. And I wouldn't do, wait, wait, I wouldn't do it because I'm just as proud to be an American as he is to be a Russian, but if I asked him to switch places with me, he wouldn't do it either. You know? I tell you, the one thing I believe about President Yeltsin, he's just like me, you know, we make mistakes and we're not perfect, and we don't have all the answers. But I'll tell you one thing about him: he at least gets up every day and tries to make a difference. He's trying to do something. And the world is full of politicians who in times of change only worry about maintaining their popularity instead of making decisions. At least he's trying to make decisions and move generally in the right historical direction. And so if you disagree with him, you should get in here and contribute to this great democratic debate and try to help develop better policies. But it's a good thing, I think, that you have a president who's willing to wade into the tides of history and make decisions. Because the...
My name is George Shabba. I'm graduated in computer science. And you've been talking about the future of our nation and said, well, we must look into another future, but the nearest future is in two years we're having new presidential elections, and Mr. Yeltsin, in whom you personificate Russian democracy, will not run for the election because of his age. And we can see at the moment at least no one among the Democratic team who can inherit his power. So it means that in two years we'll have a way different president. He could be either communist or nationalist. Is America ready or getting ready to deal with this situation? And again, we're concerned with this: why are not you willing to give protections to the nations who seek it? I mean, for instance, the Baltic nations.
First of all, one of the things you will learn now that you have these elections all the time is that two years is an eternity in a democracy. Just because there's nobody on the scene now doesn't mean there won't be someone on the scene that none of you have ever heard of two years from now, that a majority of the people will fall in love with and make president of the country. So you cannot assume that. On the other hand, I would say this not only to the forces of reform, but to any other blocs: one of the most important responsibilities of political parties in a democracy is to always be grooming new leaders and to never treat anyone, no matter how great he or she may be, as totally indispensable. So this is something that all these groups will have to learn: you have to always be grooming new people for leadership. But I wouldn't assume that there would be no future leaders besides out of the other two blocs you mentioned. Now, on the Baltics, we have not denied them the right to protection. In fact, we have invited them to be part of this Partnership for Peace, and in order to be part of it, and keep in mind, Russia has agreed to be part of it, they will participate in joint military planning, joint military operations. And as we do the exercises, the only way you can be part of it is if you promise to respect the territorial boundaries of all the other countries that are part of this. So we are giving them a great deal of protection. It just means that they're not members of NATO right away. The other NATO members will tell you that to be part of NATO, you have to be in a position to assume certain responsibilities as well as just ask for the security guarantee. But there are significant increases in securities just to being part of the Partnership for Peace. Before we go to the screen again, to St. Petersburg, I would like to introduce the most important person in this audience to me, my wife, Hillary, who just came to Russia this morning. A very large number of the people I have met in the last two days, especially young women, have asked me about her, so I thought I would introduce them, and I thank you for that. Is someone going to ask a... St. Petersburg, you have a question?
Good day, Moscow, Mr. President. As we understand it, in difference with Stavropol, we, in Moscow, we have a...
As we understand it, in difference with Stavropol, we, in Moscow, we have bad weather, we have a strong wind and rain. We are in St. Petersburg. St. Petersburg is a city of three revolutions and it was founded by Peter the First. I am Andriy Kalitin and we have a president, President Bill Clinton. Good day, Mr. President. I'm the director of Limbus Press. Very recently, the political and economic assistance was very closely linked to human rights and why at the present time does America help the Baltic states in spite of the repression against Russians in that country? Thank you.
Which country? First of all...
I'm talking about all three Baltic countries, Latvia, Lithuania and Estonia.
Well, first of all, in Lithuania, the, your government, the Russian government withdrew the troops because it was satisfied with the relationship between the two countries. There are still outstanding questions with Estonia and Latvia. An international group from the Council on Security and Cooperation in Europe, CSCE, is now in Latvia studying the situation. And we have made it clear, I have personally met with the leaders of all the Baltic states and I have said, we were far the independence and the freedom of the Baltic nations, but we expect the Russian minorities to be protected. And if we have evidence that they are being abused, it will affect our policies toward them. So I assure you, sir, that I'm waiting for the report right now on Latvia by the unbiased sort of third-party source, and if there is evidence that they are abusing the rights of the Russian minorities, then I will act accordingly. I do not, I don't think we can have a double standard, we can't have one standard for the United States and Russia and say, if you're a smaller country, you can do things that bigger countries shouldn't be permitted to do. Yes? I'll take them both, go ahead, come on, sir, let's let her go first, go ahead. And you stand here, that's okay, go ahead.
My name is Olga, and Mr. President, will America give strong financial support to the business man who likes to invest in the economy of Russia?
We have, where is our support for them, is that what you said? We have some institutions, the Export-Import Bank and the, the Office of Private Investment, which help private investors to invest in other countries. But the main thing we are trying to do now, we need much more, there should be much more American investment in Russia. Our, two of my cabinet members met with the American business community here yesterday morning and in March, the Secretary of Commerce is coming here with a group, a large group of American businessmen to encourage them to invest. We have also taken all the duties, all the extra taxes off of nearly 5,000 Russian products which can now be sold without handicap into the United States. So we are trying to figure out not only how we can invest more here, but how we can buy more of your products. And in the end, that is much more important to your economic future than any direct government aid because there's, in our economy, there is so much more money in the private sector than in the government sector. So we are working on that and I hope in March, when, when the American investment and trade mission comes here, it gets a lot of publicity and, and that they get a chance to meet a lot of people and to learn a lot about how we can do that. Go ahead.
Thank you for the possibility.
But there are, if they need help with the financing for investment, we actually have institutions to do that also, to help them move in here, go ahead.
Okay, in your speech, you mentioned you want to protect fully Russian democracy. Is it the same for you, Russian democracy and the President Boris Yeltsin? It's the first part of the question. And the second one, how long is the, how far the United States is going to go to protect Russian democracy? I forget to introduce myself, my name is Antonia Tarashkin, I'm the third-year student of Russian Economic Academy, thank you.
The, the answer to your first question is that, is Russian democracy the same thing as Boris Yeltsin? No, not now, because you also have a democratic constitution that the people have voted for and a democratically-elected parliament that the people have voted for. But before the last election, you only had one person who had ever been voted on in a free election by all the people of Russia, the president. Now, do I intend to work with President Yeltsin as long as he embodies Russian democracy and as long as he is the choice of the majority of the people of Russia to be the president? Of course, there is no other president. I mean, it's, just like, there may be some people in Russia who wish someone else for President of the United States, but I'm the only U.S. president you have right now. That's not the same thing as saying that I'm all there is to American democracy, I'm not. So what we wished to do yesterday evening, Ambassador Pickering, our American ambassador and Mrs. Pickering, who are both here, held a reception for me at the American Ambassador's residence, Spasov House, and we had a lot of the leaders of parliament, a lot of the leaders of the regional political groups, a lot of people from the private sector, some of whom are from different political groups, there to meet me. Because now democracy is three things, it's the elected president, the constitution and the parliament, plus people who have been elected in various ways throughout the country, plus people who are in free associations like labor movements. Now, one thing democracy is, is beyond majority rule, is respect for minority rights, for individual freedoms, like the freedom of speech and the right to vote even if you don't vote the way people like. So when you said, how far would I go to protect, on Russian democracy, I will be a, I want to, I want an equal partnership here. I don't want to have any dictatorial or control in Russia, I just want to be an equal partner with a strong partner. And I will be an equal partner as long as there is democracy, which is majority rule under the constitution and respect for minority rights and minority interests. Yes, sir?
My name is Parel Nikitan and I'm a Russian student. Mr. President, Mr. President, what do you think is the main difference between Russia and the United States?
I, I think the main difference between Russia and the United States today is that we are the oldest, now the longest-lasting continuous democracy on the face of the earth and you are one of the youngest. Like, we are, we have now been a free democracy for over 200 years and, and that affects the way we are and the way we, we deal with things. On the other hand, we have a lot of problems in common and we have a lot of good things in common. We, we are much more, our people are, have deep roots in the soil, we're much more likely that we're much more sort of open and friendly and gregarious in a certain way than many people in other countries. We also unfortunately have a lot of the same problems, you are now dealing with a crime problem and my country has one of the worst crime problems in the world. So we are, we have a lot in common, our two peoples do. And we have always pretty much gotten along except for the, the tensions caused when we had different political systems before and after World War II. But I would say the biggest difference flows out of the fact that we have had the benefit of being a democracy for 200 years and you are one of the youngest. Let's go to Nizhny Novgorod. Did I say it right? Nizhny Novgorod, is that right? Hello?
Right. We welcome you here from Nizhny Novgorod. Unfortunately, you can't see our Kremlin here, it's very beautiful. And next to me here are my fellow citizens. A very short citizen, short history of Novgorod is that it's a trade center. This was known as Gorky in the Soviet days, this was a center of military industry, this was the place where Sacharov was exiled to. And once again, Nizhny Novgorod is the center of reform. You can see this from the people who've come here. Right next to me are members of international corporations, they are here to accomplish these reforms here in the Nizhny Novgorod Oblast. Dmitri, we are sister cities with Philadelphia. And here are our businessmen who have enterprises, joint ventures. Olga Toymina, who is a citizen, honorary citizen of our town. The Sacharov Festival is going on, Rostropovich just visited us and we have many, many students here who have studied in the United States and our question is, is the only one we'll have a chance to ask. Right next to me is a teacher, her name is Lilia Aliva, she is engaged in exchanges, student exchanges. I've been doing this for not terribly long, but usually these are one-sided exchanges. Does Mr. President think that American students who would have something to learn from Russia as well?
Yes, first of all, I'm glad you have a sister-city relationship with Philadelphia, it is a, it is a wonderful, wonderful city. They also voted for me for president. But the, the answer to your question is definitely, you know, I came here in the first week of 1970 as a student, on my own, when I was living in England, because I wanted, I think we should send large numbers of American students here, I think we have a lot to learn. Keep in mind, if we were having this, if Boris Yeltsin came to the United States and did what I'm doing here, all, very few of the students could stand up and speak to him in Russian as you were speaking to me in English. We have a lot to learn from you and I would like more of our students to come here. Yes, yes, this young man, yes. This is our youngest questioner so far, I think. How old are you, young man?
My name is Alexander Fedorov, I'm 30 years old and...
It's 13, not 30. Go ahead.
I saw your picture shaking hands with President Kennedy and I'd like to ask you, how old were you and when you got here, an idea to become a president of the United States?
Come here. Come shake hands with me and maybe you'll be president of Russia someday. I was, I was 16 when I shook hands with President Kennedy and it was about that time that I knew I wanted to go into, to, to public service. But of course, at that time, I had no idea that I could ever be elected president or that I would ever have a chance to. But sometime when I was a fairly young man, I decided that I would work hard and that if I ever got a, an opportunity, then I would try to become president. Probably our greatest president was Abraham Lincoln, who was the President of the United States during the Civil War in the mid-1800s. And when he was a young man, Abraham Lincoln wrote in his diary, "I will work and get ready and perhaps my chance will come." I say that to you. And one thing we do have in common that I have always admired about your country is many of the leaders of your country, like me, have come from basically quite humble circumstances, have been working people. And that's a great thing for a nation, to make it possible to cast the net for talent very wide so that anybody has a chance to rise to the top if he or she has the ability and the good fortune to do so. So good luck to you.
Thank you very much.
So, another young person, yes, go ahead. Okay, yeah? No, no, yeah?
I'm sorry, but I'd be pleasure with that, I will speak in Russian, okay?
Mr. President, I have two questions for you today. You stated that you have your idea of what democracy is and that's quite natural, there are three component parts, but don't you feel that in England, there's a completely different democracy as, as there is in France? And when you do visits around the world and say, this sort of democracy is the very best model, let's, in other words, say, okay, Russians, follow us, follow our model. I think this isn't quite correct. I have another question for you, if I can ask this one.
Let me answer that one first, let me answer this one first. No, I, I perfectly agree with that, I think you could have a system, a democratic system like the British, like the French, like the Italians, like you name it, but they all have certain things in common. They all have opportunities for the people to vote and a, and a system for them to have elected representatives who themselves get to vote on which laws govern the people and some system for the protection of individual rights and the rights of minority groups. But how you do that is perfectly up to you and, you know, there are many different ways you can do it. Yes, the, the British system is different from the French system and both them are different from, from our system. Interestingly enough, your system is different from ours too. You elect one president and then a parliament, but you're, you're, the upper chamber of your parliament has more control over the lower chamber than ours does and your president, on paper at least, has more power than I do. I sort of like your system. So, no, they should be different, I agree with that, go ahead.
I have a second question then. During your election campaign, you demonstrated how you can play the sax, I wonder if you would demonstrate that for us here today?
No, I played for President Yeltsin last night, I have, I have a quota, one saxophone played per country. I didn't bring the horn today, but I thank you for asking. One more, yes, young man, there, yes? Go ahead.
George Gross, Mr. President, just to measure the situation, you don't have, you don't have an opportunity to speak to this pretty large audience, you don't have an opportunity to pop in the bakery, buy some bread and chat with some people on the street, you just have an opportunity to choose one person, one Russian, one Russian person and talk only to him. From what social layer would you choose this person? Would it be, I don't know, an economist, entrepreneur, student, businessman, politician, teachers?
If I could only speak to one person, I would speak to the wisest person I could find in a medium-sized city in Russia that had, that was having a difficult time with these economic changes. I would talk to someone who was, regardless of what economic strata they were from, he or she was from, had a lot of friends from all walks of life and could tell me how they were viewing what is going on now. And I would pick someone from a sort of a medium to small-sized town because they'd be more likely to know all different kinds of people. Red Square, we had, need to take one question from Red Square. Red Square, can you hear me? They say, I've, I've gone over my time already 10 minutes, you know.
You have a very educated auditorium there, everybody speaks English, I wonder if you can do the same in America, get a whole audience of people who can speak Russian. Here we are at the Red Square, the people who are here would like to ask one question of very... My name is Andriy Petrov, I'm a student. Mr. President, we're getting an impression that you're supporting not so much the reforms in Russia, but the personality of President Yeltsin, what's this connected to?
Well, I already answered that question once, or I tried to, but I will, I will answer it again. Until you had your last election and you adopted a new constitution and you elected a new parliament from people, with lots of people from different parties, President Yeltsin was the only person who had actually been elected by all the people of Russia in a full and free election. Now you have three sources of democratic legitimacy, if you will, you have the parliament, the president and the constitution. We have no interest in picking favorites or defining Russian democracy in terms of anyone. So you have done that and you must do that. The second thing I would say however is that no country can have more than one president at a time. Every nation needs someone who's the leader, who then works with the leaders of other nations. And I'm the President of the United States. And I'm the president of the United States. If I want to work with you and help you, I should be open to meeting with and listening to all the democratic voices in Russia, but in the end, I still have to work with your president. Go ahead.
Mr. President, I've heard, when we were a law student, we were in Moscow. And now you are the president of your nation. I'm a law student of the Moscow International University. And could you give me some advice, how can I follow, how I can follow a degree of path?
Well, I can tell you this. I came from a family that had no money, no influence, and no particular interest in politics. My mother got interested in politics after I started running, but not before. My advice to you would be two things. One, get the best education you can. And two, involve yourself in politics. And figure out what you believe, which party and group you want to be identified with, work in the elections, work on some problem that people have. And then the third thing I would say is this, try to develop a genuine interest, if you don't have it, in the real problems and hopes of ordinary people. Because in a democracy, the only way you can really keep going throughout all the things that will happen, all the ups and downs, is if you really care what happens to other people as well as what happens to you and your own career. They say we have to stop. I've had a wonderful time. I'm sorry, but they're telling me I have to cut off. So what do you have there, sir? Oops. I want to thank you again. Thank you very much for this. Thank you. I want to thank you again. I wish we had another hour. I'd like to take all the questions, but, but I have abused the network. We are now 18 minutes over time. And if you'll hang around here a little bit after it, we'll shake hands and I'll try to answer your questions at least face to face. But I have to let the network cut off. Thank you, all of you from our remote sites. Thank all of you for being here. And Hillary and I are delighted to be with you. Good luck to you. We'll try to be good partners and good friends. Thank you.
Дорогие друзья, россияне! Вот и закончилась эта удивительная встреча, о которой, наверное, еще будут много говорить и писать. Но это была ближайшая история. А сейчас... ...миллионная аудитория, и президенты Соединенных Штатов Билла Клинкена, и телекомпания Останкина за то, что они все вместе дали нам редкую возможность убедиться в том, что и по высокой политике может быть человеческое лицо. И вот так по первым слетам это, наверное, самый главный урок, который лично я извлек из этой встречи. Надеюсь, что и вы тоже. Мы с вами прощаемся на Красной площади. С вами были журналисты Денис Молчанов и Дмитрий Хуров. Все вам добро.